Sorry about that. The March 11th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Menor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jezling.
Present.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Mrs. Bryant.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome everyone to the March 11th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Menor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each Board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the Board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the Board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request if needed additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the Board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the Board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the Board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the Board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address questions to the President. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Channel 96 in Menor and Channel 22 in Menor on the Lake. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode during the meeting. First up, approval of the minutes from February 11th, 2014 Regular Meeting. I move where you approve the minutes.
Second.
Any corrections?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Did you say that?
The second.
Whatever. Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jezling.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryant.
Yes.
And our first hearing of the public on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move on. Superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Madam President, Members of the Board, I am recommending approval of consent agenda items 5A1 through 5A4.
Show moved.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Jezling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Bryant.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, Members of the Board, we have several outstanding students being recognized this evening who have excelled both scholastically and athletically. This is Menor pride at its best. We will start the recognitions with the spelling competition winners. Mr. Porter, along with Ms. Miller, will do the presentations.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. In our annual district spelling competition, this was probably the most competitive group of spellers that we have had in recent years. We want to recognize them first by grade levels. If our students, when we call your name, if you'd come forward and then form a line in the front here, that would be great until all the spellers are recognized. And I would also invite our principals or representatives from each school, the adult representative, up with the speller if you would like to join them up front. Our Grade Four winner from Lake Elementary School, Emma Stafford, and I think Ms. Amy Land is here to join her. Our Grade Five winner from Bellflower Elementary School, Nathan Rolfes, Principal Ms. Hardy. Our Grade Six winner, Dia Chakrabarti, from Ridge Middle School, Principal Ms. Megan Kinsey. The Grade Six, Seven, and Eight also have alternates that we recognize. The alternate for Sixth Grade from Shore Middle School, Samuel Lanchar, Principal Our Seventh Grade winner from Memorial Middle School, Allison Frye, Principal Mr. Dudziak. Our alternate Seventh Grader from Shore Middle School, Autumn Westbrook. Our Grade Eight winner from Shore Middle School, Ryan Profilay. And our alternate for the Eighth Grade from Ridge Middle School, Noah Rolfes. And if our spellers would stay up front for just a moment, we would like to recognize from the district competition, which is most competitive, our runner-up and our winner, our runner-up from the group from Ridge Middle School, Dia Chakrabarti. And our district winner for this year from Shore Middle School, Ryan Profilay. And just as a note, Ryan was, I believe it was third place in the county out of more than 20 spellers, so that was a stellar performance for Menor schools. Thank you to all our spelling winners.
Just really quick before we congratulate some other students and while their picture rearranging, Ryan was phenomenal as our representative for Menor schools at the County Spelling Bee. Very, very competitive. You have all the best spellers in the area and in the region, and when you get at that level and you get through so many rounds, a lot of those kids ask for a word of origin, definition, can you use it in a sentence, and they repeat those over and over. Ryan goes up there, they say the word, he bangs it out right away. It is amazing. And one time, the lady tried to slow him down and stop him and say, you know, it has an alternate spelling, and he says, "That's okay, I got this." And it was phenomenal. So, and Ryan, I know for sure that the only word you got wrong was, if somebody else would've had that word, you would've swept it and have moved on and been going to DC. So, very impressive. Congratulations to you. Okay, next, we have the Cardinal Challenge winners. Every year, we hold Cardinal Challenge competition between our three middle schools, and the winner this year, fittingly being here tonight, is Ridge Middle School. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Porter.
As Mr. Miller mentioned, our 2014 Cardinal Challenge, which is the academic knowledge competition that is among the three middle schools, was very closely contested this year as Memorial and Ridge really ended up battling it out until the end. In the end, Ridge came away with the victory, and we'd like to recognize their team tonight. I would also ask Mrs. Kinsey, the principal, to join us up front. First of all, their coach and advisor, Mrs. Alicia Williams. You come forward, please. And again, I would invite the students, as you come forward, to accept your certificates. If you would shake the members, the hands of the members of the Board up front, and also stay up until all of your teammates are here, that would be perfect. From the Sixth Grade, Paige Johnson. From the Seventh Grade, Eric Berezny. And Clara Rukaszewski. And Eighth Graders from the team, Nicholas Amos. Let's hear it for our Ridge team. Thank you. Congratulations, Ridge Rams.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Madam President, Members of the Board, March is Youth Art Month. If you haven't done so already, please take a look at some of the artwork out front before you leave today. Every year, I get more and more impressed with the work that our students do, and kudos also to our secondary and elementary art departments for working with our talented students to bring that out. Just amazing. I've asked Mr. Wade, along with Ms. Miller, to make the presentations.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the fantastic art students that we have at Menor High School. If you had not had a chance to check out the artwork here, please do so and stop by the school. There's just, you know, it's amazing. Every couple of weeks, we switch the artwork. The work that our students do is phenomenal and really sets us apart from a lot of the other public schools in the area. So, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the students in March as it is Art Month here for our students. The group of students we're going to recognize, I would please ask Michelle Kane and Heather Ambrose, two of our art teachers who are with us tonight, to come up to the front to help us recognize these students as well. One of the groups of students participates in the Graphic Arts Council Benny Awards Competition, which is an annual graphic arts contest for Cleveland Aryan High School students, where graphic artwork in the categories of printing and graphic design are judged and a cash awards and recognition plaques are presented. The competition offers students their first exposure review of their work by a panel of Aryan professionals. The printmaking students are from MHS and took the top three awards in the printing category. It's our pleasure to recognize these students. If you'd please come up. Emily Macholsky, a 12th grader who received first place. Second place, Melissa Abbott, 12th grader. Melissa's unable to attend tonight. Our third place, Jasmine Francoz, also a 12th grader. The Lake and Geaga County Secondary Art Awards judge 400 works of art were selected from over 500 entries of young artists from 16 high schools and middle schools in Lake and Geaga counties. Categories represented included photography, sculpture, ceramics, jewelry, painting, printmaking, drawing, and mixed media. Local art teachers, including teachers from Menor High School, Memorial, and Ridge, volunteer their time and effort to run the show. Judges for this show are local artists and/or former art educators from the area. Artwork is judged using the following awards: Honorable Mention, Gold Seal, Blue Ribbon, and Scholarship Cash Award. 133 of the 413 artworks in the show are Menor students' artwork. Menor students took the best, excuse me, Menor students took these top cash prizes: Best of Show, seven through nine, Best of Lake County, seven through nine, and 10 through 12, Best of Grades, seven, eight, nine, and 10, and five Judges' Choice Awards, as well as 58 blue ribbons, 37 gold seals, and 25 honorable mentions. The 2014 Lake and Geaga Secondary Art Award winners are $200 Scholarship Award winner, Kayla Gabor, 12th grade. Best of Show, cash prize, Sienna Leganki. Best of Lake County, Mesa Kokabani, 12th grade. Best of 10th Grade, Simone Prince. And Best of 9th Grade, Tori Indray. The National PTA and U.S. Department of Education in celebration of the unveiling of more than 200 pieces of nationally-recognized student artwork from 2012-13 National PTA Reflections Program in its theme of Magic of a Moment at the U.S. Department of Education in Washington, D.C. We have Senior Cecilia Baqueal represent Menor as an exhibit with her artwork. The National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Our students were among the talented artists and writers in Grade Seven through 12 who submitted over 3,100 art entries and 1,500 writing entries for the 2014 competition. Senior Jasmine Francoz earned an award of Silver Key and two honorable mentions, and Fox Nicely earned a Silver Key. If they would come up, please. It would also be appropriate to also recognize, we just found out this weekend, that Fox and Jasmine had two of the three Governor's Shows winners announced this weekend. They'll have their artwork down at the Governor's Show for the State of Ohio, as well as Carolina Kane, who has a, I believe, it's a photograph that she had completed that would also be recognized at the Governor's Show. If she would come up as well, we'd appreciate it. Again, we'd like to congratulate all these students on their hard work and effort, and they do a great job representing us both in the classroom and outside at the competitions that they compete in. So, congratulations and nice job, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we have two teams and two individual students who qualified for state competition this winter in their respective sports. I know how hard you've all worked to obtain this and how much time and effort you put into it, your parents put into it, and your coaches, and I congratulate all of you. I've asked Mr. Casella to begin the recognitions with the girls bowling team in conjunction with Ms. Miller and Mr. Wade.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, we've had another fantastic winter season at Menor High School, and the tradition of Menor athletics and Cardinal pride has really carried again through our winter sports season. It is my pleasure to introduce to you members of our state qualifying girls bowling team. Coach Mike Phillips is unable to attend tonight. He's actually just had surgery, so he's doing well, but we're okay. But he's unable to be here with us tonight. This year's team finished the season with a 15-2 record, finishing second in the Northeast Ohio Conference. During the season, the Cardinals won the North Olmsted Eagle Challenge, the Roots Towns Tournament, and the Northeast Ohio Conference Tournament. The Cards advanced through sectionals and districts, qualifying them for the state tournament last weekend in Columbus. And if you ever get the chance or the opportunity to go to the state bowling tournament, Mr. Wade and I, that place is just crazy. So, I highly recommend that you get down there at some point. At the state tournament, our girls finished fourth in the qualifying round to advance to the finals. They won their opening round match over Columbus Briggs before falling to Coventry in the semifinal round, placing them fourth in the State of Ohio. This year, our girls bowling team, and I'd like you girls to come up here and line up like we've been doing, Ally Brancato. And Rachel Strogan. Before I let the girls go, I do want to acknowledge one individual. The bowling tournament also is a team competition, but they also have individual awards, and I want to special recognize Ashley Fortuna as she and the individual score, she finished as state runner-up this year. So, congratulations, Ashley. Thank you, ladies.
You're good.
Our other team that qualified for the state meet this year, it's a pleasure to introduce members of our gymnastics team who qualified for the state meet in Columbus. Coach Megan Merz is unable to join us tonight, but I'll be calling up the girls, the members of our gymnastics team. Our team this year won seven meets, including the McGee Invitational and the Northeast Ohio Valley Division Championships. They were undefeated in conference play this year and ran the table. They won the sectional tournament, and they were district's runner-up that qualified them for the state tournament. This year, our Lady Cardinals brought home the silver. They were state runner-ups this year. Many of the young ladies also competed in individual events the second day, and they did a very nice job down there and represented us very well. Members of the team, Kelly Atkins. Alexandra Spalding. Again, another great season in the proud tradition of our gymnastics program, and we're going to get home that gold next year, right, ladies? We had two individuals that qualified for state tournaments. The first is a member of our girls swim team who qualified for the state Swimming and Diving Meet. I would ask that our head swim coach, Kristen Smuds, and our swimmer, Maria Coy, join me Maria had a fantastic swim season this year. She placed fifth in the state in the 50 freestyle and sixth in the state in the 100 breaststroke. She was named All Ohio in both events. She was a district champion in the 50 freestyle, and she set the Northeast Ohio Conference record in the 200 individual medley. She also holds now school records in numerous events, and this year, she set school records in the 50 freestyle and the 200 intermediate. She was named the River Division of the Northeast Ohio Conference Most Valuable Swimmer. She had a fantastic season, and we have one more year with her. We also had a member of our wrestling team qualify for the 2014 State Wrestling Tournament in Columbus. I'd ask Coach Ray Lamanna and wrestler Austin Tomales to join us here on stage. Austin had a fantastic season for the Cardinals. He ended the year with a record of 26 wins and 11 losses overall. He was a Northeast Ohio All-Conference selection. He was runner-up at the sectionals and placed third at our own Menor District Wrestling Tournament, qualifying him to the state meet where he did exceptionally well. So, congratulations, Austin, on a great season.
Congratulations to all of our students for a job well done. Madam President and Members of the Board, I am pleased to report that Menor Schools is the proud recipient of four Best Ed Tech Awards at the first 2014 Ohio
is the proud recipient of four Best Ed Tech Awards at the first 2014 Ohio Education Technology Conference. These four awards were Best Use of Blended Learning presented by K-12, the Ed Leader Innovator Award, the Teacher Innovator Award, and the Ohio Trend Center Award. The Best Ed Tech Awards were established just this year to recognize the educational technology innovation of schools, colleges, programs, teachers, administrators, and tech coordinators from across the state of Ohio. More than 20,000 votes were cast to determine the award winners. I am pleased and thrilled to recognize many of our staff across the district and specifically here at Ridge for their awards. There were nine awards given as part of this process. Mentor was nominated for four and won the four that they were nominated for. So I cannot begin, again, to thank these teachers enough for the time, effort, energies they put into getting our blended learning initiatives off the ground, and commend them for their efforts and time and service to their district and to their students. So with that, I'm going to call them up and let you know which award they are a recipient of, and we'll start, and this is in alphabetical order, with Krista Toda for Best Use of Blended Tracy Dunn, Ohio Trend Center Award, Teacher Innovator Award. Stephanie Dwyer, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Tom Dwyer, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Chelsea Eminger, Ohio Trend Center Award. Chelsea, I will embarrass probably, Chelsea is also one of our instructional coaches for the district. She just, she snuck in a couple minutes late because she was doing a webcast webinar for 700-plus people in Medina with another teacher. So we appreciate you doing those things for the district as well. Mary Ann Fauquert for Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Brian Frank, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Bill Heinrich, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Dan Hurtak, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Ridge Principal Megan Kinsey, Best Use of Blended Learning Award and Ohio Trend Center Jane Miller, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Katie Mills, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Jody Morris, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. Jeremy Shore, Ed Leader Innovator Award, Best Use of Blended Learning Award and Ohio Trend Sean Saint-Hilaire, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. And Carmen Walker, Best Use of Blended Learning Award. If we could have one more round of applause for the entire group. And if, we have, we'll go ahead and have a seat, but we're going to have Tracy Dunn, if she could come up or stay up. I was going to do that now, for Tracy. Just recently, I believe, probably on Friday, our district was notified that we have an award that we just received, that Tracy Dunn just received, presented by the National School Boards Association. This award was created to identify the emerging educational technology leaders who will inspire students and help shape the national education conversation for at least the next 20 years. And I'm pleased to announce that one of these 20 winners across the country is Ms. Tracy As part of these awards and everything that you've seen tonight and heard about Ridge and Mentor Schools, the district has truly become a statewide leader in blended learning instructional practice. And some of the teachers are going to share some of their experiences with blended learning and how those relationships with their students have been stronger through this instructional practice. They're going to talk about Catalyst and some of the things that they've done with blended learning throughout this year. So I think Mrs. Mills is going to start. And if I'm wrong, you're starting now. And friends.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, for the past six months, the teachers at Ridge Middle School, along with the elementary teachers working in Catalyst, the research and developmental classroom at Ridge, have been working to redefine what education looks like for our learners. We are finding ways to better reach each student and to prepare those students for rapidly changing and increasingly connecting to the world. We'd like to share a little bit about what we are doing here with you.
The opportunity to work with technology in the classroom has made it possible for us to differentiate with more efficiency than we've ever differentiated before. We are able to utilize software and free web-based programs to assess for understanding throughout the learning process. Because of this assessment as we go, the technology is actually enabling us to meet students where they are and we're hoping move them farther than we have before. Students are given more options to demonstrate mastery by emphasizing their learning styles, learning preferences, and ability levels. Perhaps most importantly, this model has significantly contributed to an increase in small-group work that is both targeted and focused, allowing for instruction that is aligned to specific student needs, whether that need is remediation or enrichment. We are able to reconfigure on the fly, and the learning is more fluid and purposeful than ever previously experienced.
With our instructional methods shifting, we need to begin to rethink classroom design. Traditional clunky desks in rows are no longer necessary or effective in reaching the needs of 21st century learners. The use of movable furniture allows for teachers to reconfigure the classroom on the fly. Instructional shifts in a blended learning classroom focus on the importance of small-group instruction and self-paced learning. Movable furniture allows for teachers to configure small groups on an as-needed basis. Desks are no longer the only learning space. Ritable surfaces allow for students to get up and move during the learning process, which is necessary for an adolescent student. In addition to classroom redesign, it is important to utilize all spaces in the building to supplement the learning that is happening inside the classrooms. Our media center has been remodeled to provide space for collaborative learning as well as resources to support virtual learning. This space now supports learning beyond the classroom's four walls.
Handing a student a device that has access to the endless information of the Internet is a very powerful tool. We knew our role as instructors would have to change, as we would no longer be needed as the lone source of knowledge. Students would now have the ability to Google answers for themselves, and it was our challenge to design lessons and questions that would challenge them to draw their own conclusions and create findings through various technological means. With one-to-one devices, we have achieved this through blogging, video creation, and collaborative presentation tools. Students are able to learn at their own pace using programs such as Schoology, Google Drive, BlendSpace, and Khan Academy by watching both teacher-created videos as well as videos found on sites like YouTube. Teachers have the ability to respond to students' questions in a more timely manner, as feedback can be given in some cases instantaneously. While technology is a great tool, it's not the only one we use, that we utilize. Having a student's face stuck in a device for a full 45 minutes is not always appropriate. Many old-school techniques are still used, whether it is through paper or one of the many writable surfaces in the classroom. Through this learning model, students know they can be the engine of their own learning, and if the train derails, will be able to step in and help in small-group or one-on-one setting. Let me share one of these examples. One day for an assignment, I had students working on Khan Academy. A particular student completed the task for the day and asked me if it were okay if he learned how to computer program. I didn't even know that Khan Academy had such a feature, which he was happy to tell me all about. He said that the Nationwide Hour of Code we participated in earlier this year had sparked his interest. I told him, of course he could, and then just five minutes later, I watched as a 12-year-old was programming various shapes on his iPad, all of which he had taught himself to do. Learning to him was not a chore, but something he found as a personal challenge and wanted to do.
I don't have anything written down, so I'm just going to give some anecdotal classroom examples. I'm an instructional coach in the district, so I get to go to elementary schools and the middle school, and the power of these devices, whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook, is truly transforming how students learn and how teachers use their time in the classroom. So we don't have to wait for data, like Mr. Dwyer said. We have data immediately when a student takes some type of assessment. And because of that, we can group kids appropriately and target their needs appropriately, and that's a very powerful thing in education. So we're not talking to the whole group all the time. We have station rotations that work wonderfully for kids, and we can meet their needs as we need to. And the teachers working with them in PLCs, truly amazing, focused completely on student learning, and it's transformational. Thank you.
We truly believe everything shared with you thus far is a true pre-K through 12 model. In the second quarter, my kindergarten class and I traveled to Catalyst four days a week and took part, actually, we're up on the screen right now, took part in a version of blended learning that worked for five- and six-year-olds. We worked through four stations, station rotations, as Mr. Hurtak mentioned, and what those looked like were guided teacher time, writable wall space that the Catalyst room had to offer, digital content on iPads, and partner-peer work, which is so very important at such a young age. We tried not to eliminate group time as well, so very important at a kindergarten level. We still shared stories together, completed calendar activities, morning-afternoon meeting times, and mini lessons together. So we did not eliminate that piece as we took on our new role in Catalyst and blended learning. As we closed out the second quarter in Catalyst, I had students not only tell me, but others, I don't want to go back to school. So while they were, while we were on our daily trip to school, students didn't feel like they were at school and what they were used to, even in the short time that these little ones had been in school. Also, as we closed out the second quarter, we were able to take a look at some winter benchmark data, and we were able to compare my current class with scores from previous classes, and the numbers showed a little step, a jump, you could say, in growth, which only solidified our belief in this model, and things were working, things were clicking. We made it work. Catalyst served a twofold purpose, so we feel the actual classroom is a welcoming spot for teachers and students to try what it is that you would like to define blended learning, a mix of technology and teacher work. I felt that we had the freedom and the kind of risk-taking behavior to try things and be ready and willing to fail and learn from what we were trying, all because it was new, we were making steps forward. Also, the observation room, which is the second piece to Catalyst, provided a space for other teachers, other administrators, to come and not only see teachers in the classroom in Catalyst working, but also how students were responding to what was going on in the classroom. And so far, both of these aspects have proved much success. On behalf of the Ridge Project and Catalyst, thank you, Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, for this awesome, awesome opportunity. We are all so very lucky to be Cardinals.
Thank you. I think I speak for the entire board when I say, one of our favorite things is seeing all the success and the recognition of our staff, students, and teachers, so thank you very much. We're going to take a little break here, five or 10 minutes. Anybody that would like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're welcome to do so. If you have more important things to do this evening, you're welcome to leave. Thanks for coming.
Let me say one thing before everybody walks out. I need a minute. This is not only about today, but tomorrow. As a team, you're all building, the learners, the educators, the students of tomorrow, they're going to continue their education. This is a different way of learning. Many of these students today will continue their education well beyond retirement even. They've learned a new way to pick up a computer, an iPad, ask a question, get an answer, expand. Their minds are going to be like, I can see this, it's fantastic, the success into the future for these students. Just mind-boggling to me. So thank you very much, all of you. It's not just the board, it's you, the teachers, the administrators, the parents, so thank You may go. That was a group lecture.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting.
Madam President, Members of the Board, we have one revised policy which incorporates the district's decision to offer our students a district email account. Since this is the first reading of the revised policy, no vote is necessary at this time, but I did want to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, as we have for the past few years, we apply to the state to waive one full day during the school year. Next year's would be November 4th, 2014, for professional staff development. I'm recommending approval of a resolution for a request for a waiver for the minimum school year regulations by the State Superintendent of Public Instruction to provide professional staff development.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President and Members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C-1 related to certified staff and C-2 and 3, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Board of Education report and recommendations, I will entertain a motion to extend the contract of our superintendent, Matthew J. Miller, for the term from August 1st, 2015 through and including July 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Bryner?
Yes.
Legislative report?
No report.
Well, Matt's going to speak to the calamity days, but first, I'd like to say that Governor Kasich gave his annual State of the Address, State of the State address, and in that, some of the highlights of the speech included further tax cuts made possible with the addition of a severance tax on oil and gas drilling, new strategies dealing with dropout prevention and recovery in Ohio schools, encouraged mentoring amongst Ohio's youth, expanding technical and vocational education. That's a big write-on for me. Improving college credit opportunities as well as programs dealing with mental illness and drug abuse prevention. Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Before I start, I just wanna really quick back up and thank the Board for my contract extension, my support, for the support and trust, and I appreciate it very much and look forward to continuing to work with a phenomenal staff and a very, very fantastic community, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Tuttle asked if I would speak about calamity days. The House and Senate Conference Committees agreed in principle today to extend the calamity days by four, without teachers having to be there for two or four any of them. Governor still has to sign. Part of the stipulation is, after the five calamity days, school districts would need to use four contingency days first and then they would get four additional days after that. I'm interpreting it now as our three blizzard bags would be three of the four contingency days. And as it's written now, we would have to either make up a day, which would be June 1st, or we would have to add 30 minutes to make, to the end of a day, to make up that day. So we're administratively gonna talk about that once it's signed by the Governor as to what the best option is for our district and for our kids. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Mary.
All right. Chief Financial Officers, report and recommendations, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. It's recommended the financial statements for the month of February 2014 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investment transactions and investment portfolio presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Tie buster. Oh, sorry. Please call the roll.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental, or I'm sorry, the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the student activity, purpose, goals, and budgets presented in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of two invoices presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the district liability, fleet, property, and casualty insurance carriers and premiums as presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
I'd just like to quickly say, we feel very fortunate this year. We work with Love Insurance Agency to be our insurance agent and we had budgeted for a 5% increase and after going out into the marketplace and soliciting competitive quotations, we were able to maintain current coverages and decrease our premium by 5.6% or $18,872. So, notwithstanding the industry in general, we were very fortunate.
I saw that, that's odd in this economy. Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
Now, I'd like to say, well done, Dan. Mr. Wilson?
All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve a resolution to certify tax rates as presented by the Lake County Budget Commission found in Exhibit 7-H.
So moved.
Second.
I would just like to point out that this is the first year in my 10 years with the district that we do not have a bond rate. We paid off our last long-term debt in December of 2013 and as a result, the overall tax rate decreases by .23 mils.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes.
That completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Do we have any hearing of the public on any items? Seeing none. And I will entertain a motion for executive session. We will be discussing possible purchase or sale of property, imminent litigation, and compensation and employment of a public employee.
So moved.
Second.
You're welcome to stay or you may leave. Option is yours. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Breiner?
Yes. Thank you.